Ready when you guys are.
I've got a couple of minutes.
At 6:59, that's not a couple. I'm glad you don't take care of the finances here.
Probably off by a couple of dollars.
Three thousand, four thousand. Yeah, I agree.
All right, it's seven.
Good evening and welcome to the vote of Webster for admitting for September 26, 2019 to expand the agreement of the flag of religion and be like the eve.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Thank you, Carl.
You can sit.
All right, first order of business tonight will be public comments. If anybody would like to address the board, come to the podium and state your name.
Hello, Richard Walter, 20 Elm Street, 73-year village resident. I just want to say that I was very, very extremely disappointed with the actions of this board at the last meeting when it took approximately a half an hour to decide whether we should debate or even look into the fact of some of the upcoming possible costs of the sewer system, sweat chowers. This board took about a half an hour to decide that we should look into the costs before we change. We had other people in the audience who walked out and discussed that this board didn't even really want to look into some of these costs that may be upcoming. It took quite a while of debate before the board came around and agreed with the one board member that thought we should establish a committee to look into what effect this might have on commercial and residential properties within the village. And I am very disappointed with the actions of this board. I am happy that they did finally decide that it wouldn't hurt to at least look into it and get some other opinions before they make a decision. Thank you.
So I'd just like to comment to that. The, if you were here, obviously, on the debate was what the committee was going to entail and how it was going to work, which is important to have that information before you just go into a committee. The board all agreed to do it. If you were paying attention, the discussion was, what's it going to look like and how we're going to get there? And that was the discussion for a half hour, which I would say is a good thing, that a board is having that discussion to make sure.
And also what you should limit giving the board. The board, if you establish such a board, they should be entitled to everything because without it, they can't make a recommendation. But we had a lot of discussion about limiting what information may be given to them.
Okay, I don't recall anything about that, but thank you. Always appreciate it.
Peter Elder, 59, Dunning Avenue. Coming up tonight as a representative of two groups, that's a student I do a lot, and so here for the historic properties committee and the friends of historic preservation, we are putting on a church tour. And this is the poster, if you guys want to. So the church tour is on, so historic church tour, it's on Saturday, October 5th, from 1:00 to 3:00 p.m. We are going to be highlighting the Emmanuel Lutheran Church on West Main Street, the Baptist Church on South Avenue, the Church of the Good Shepherd on Webster Road, and the United Methodist Church on East Main Street. So this is a free tour, you don't have to pay anything for it. Of course, donations are fine, and you can begin to tour any church. So I don't know how many of you out there, or you guys even know all the history of our churches, but they are, it's a rich history, many times way back into the mid-19th century years, a million. So we decided to highlight these four churches this time. But if you are a person that goes to another church in Webster, and there are many, we would like to, over the next, maybe, you know, four to six years, try to do these tours, assuming this one is successful, to go to different churches in the town as well and highlight those too for their histories as well. So this is sort of the beginning of this process of trying to look at our churches. And by the way, this is a, all aspects of the church, not just, you know, how it was built, where it came from, but its stained glass windows, its architecture, its interior vaulting, its expansion over the years, all those things we are kind of highlighting through this kind of, through this tour. So I would encourage the board members to come if you have the time available. There's only four of them, and if you took 20 minutes at each one, two hours would be easily enough time. And I'm sure that the churches would love to talk to you about their churches and their architecture and their history, and it should be a great time, and I want to encourage all of you to do it. The three churches, the Methodist Church, the Baptist Church, and the Lutheran Church are all within walking distance of each other, so for those of you who just like to walk around the village, it's an excellent opportunity to do that and get to know the village a little bit better in the core of the village. The Shepherd Church is a little south of us, you might need to take a car to get there, but there's a sidewalk right there, so you can keep going if you want. But it's a, but they're all great, great places to be in the village, and I want to encourage everyone to go. And again, we're not leaving anyone out here for the future. I intend to do other tours that would highlight these other churches in the town too, so.
What date is that, Adrian?
It's Saturday, October 5th, from 1:00 to 3:00 p.m. And I have pliers, of course I have pliers, so I'm just going to pass them down. If you guys want to take some, maybe give the bulk to Heather, so maybe you guys could, if you'd be fine enough to put them out in Village Hall, and then we'll, that way people can come in and grab them. And if you have any questions, you know where to find me after all these years, if you weren't happy to answer any of them, there will be a brochure that it will have, so you could take that home with you. And almost every church has either a community relations person or an historian whose job it is to kind of talk up their church and talk about the history and what its relationship was to the Webster community, and you'd be astounded the number of historical names that pop up that have gone to these churches. So it's a great time, I'd encourage you everybody to go. So, any questions for anyone?
No, thank you, it's pretty.
No, but I had Joe put it on the website.
Oh, excellent, thank you, Judy, that's great.
And it's up at M&amp;T Bank, so I can put it in there too, please.
Okay, and we'll be doing some Facebooking over the next seven to 10 days to make sure people know about that platform as well. All right, thank you, okay.
What else? Okay, I will close the comments portion of the meeting, and we will move to the first item of the meeting, is the resolution to approve the management September 12. And if you have an opportunity to look this over. There are no additional comments. I will obtain a motion to approve.
Aye.
Trustee Valcain?
Aye.
Trustee Abalito?
Aye.
Trustee Lancy?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Next, we have a resolution to approve the claims and warrants. I have an opportunity to look them over, and the only question I have, I see that in front of me, is my question, questionable in that NFP. I believe that was what I was going to ask about, the expenditure for the NFP Telecom Technology Solutions of $3,120, but I believe that will be addressed?
Tom.
Was that before, or is that a separate budget item, or what?
I missed, was that the one for Jake, I'm sorry. Oh, the NFP, okay. So we put in, Marcia and I are working on this right now. Unfortunately, the phone server has basically obsolete now, and it needs to be replaced. I was not told last year, I wish we would have budgeted for it, but unfortunately, we weren't told. So we aren't sure where we're going to take it from right now, but I discussed with Mayor Byers, and he said at the end of the year, if we haven't found somewhere else we can take it, that we can take it from contingency. So at this point, we're just hoping to have you approve it, and then we'll figure out where to take it from. Probably contingency, but it's so early that we might not need something else, so at this point, we're just looking at the numbers. But if we don't have the money, we can take it from contingency.
Still any questions that I have?
Thank you, Mayor Byers.
Sure, do you have anything?
Yeah, I was just looking at the town of Webster on page one.
So that's.
September 2017 invoice.
Yeah, it was a bill that wasn't paid. We did some research, they actually had another bill that they said wasn't paid, and we were able to recover the receipt that that one was. However, it turns out that this one wasn't, and I think Jake could explain a little more about what it actually is for. It's sewer, but.
Yeah, it's our, we get it quarterly, built in the town, over the shared cost, the lab testing, things that they do for coordination, mercury testing, and things like that. It's a, we get it built from four times a year, and apparently in 17, we got one three times a year. So we're not in their books and discovered that this one wasn't paid, so like Heather said, they, they thought there was two that weren't paid. We found, that we take up one and.
September 2017.
Yeah, so that should be for the second quarter, yeah, probably the second quarter.
For $3,959, isn't it?
Yeah. I remember July, no, this September, it might be the third.
Yeah, so at this point, we don't need a budget modification, as we still have money in that line, but at the end of the year, we probably will need one, because we'll be short $3,959.
What's, Heather, what's that, 345, for mileage reimbursement, was that going to serve toll or?
It's mileage totals and the one meal I have to pay for myself.
Then I'll obtain a motion to pay a claim for more.
I'll second it. Trustee Abalito?
Aye.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Trustee Valcain?
Aye.
Trustee Lancy?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, next gen item is a bunch of modifications and transfers. I believe that we see one here, and maybe two again, right now.
Okay.
From fund balance, $36,301 to line AA.8560.200, shade tree equipment for $36,301. And that is for replacement leaf back, which was budgeted for in 2018, 19 budget. Replacement of the leaf back was sought and selected, but from competitively bid contract during last budget cycle. An issue with the performance of the machine selected was brought to our attention, and we suspended the purchase until we could determine the machine would work as needed. Because we did not have a contract in place at the end of the last budget cycle, we weren't able to encumber the funds for the purchase. In the current budget, we sought to provide for replacement leaf box and additional funds needed for the leaf back. So there would be in-line AA.8560.200 for this year after the modifications for shade tree equipment, $57,301, which will cover the cost for the back that collected and.
Yeah, same with leaf boxes, yeah.
So can I have a motion to project modification?
I'll make that motion.
Trustee Abalito?
Aye.
Trustee Lancy?
Aye.
Trustee Valcain?
Aye.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion passes.
And then the second one in there is just what we talked about, about the phone system.
The NFP Telecom?
Yes.
That would be to encumber the funds for $3,120.
Yep.
And can I have a motion to encumber these funds of $3,120 for future NFP Telecom Technology Solutions purchase? I think that will be a all-work server, as well as renewal for the following all-work server, and then backup repair, replacement warranty, unlimited remote help test support, and later.
And the renewal cost was budgeted for, so it's just the replacement one that was not.
So can I have a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion. I'll second it.
Trustee Lancy?
Aye.
Trustee Valcain?
Aye.
Trustee Abalito?
Aye.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Next, we have a resolution for discussion, I believe, excuse me, for an unpaid leave of absence. And if you'd like to.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Byers. So we have a situation, I don't think we've ever had this come up, right Jake?
Not since I've been here.
Okay, so we have an individual who has used all of his time and now has put in a request for a leave, an unpaid leave of absence, and I believe it's until end of December.
December.
Okay, yeah, so we just want to kind of make sure that we have everything in writing when we go to kind of all the details ironed out, so that there's no questions about medical and stuff like that. Jake, I did not send out this letter yet, I sent it to them, but I didn't send it to the board, I hope you want to talk about it?
Again, I didn't have a copy with it. Basically, I think if the unpaid leave of absence is approved, we're looking to make certain that, you know, other capacities, the air department, I guess, can send a letter out and so that we make sure we have, you know, clear expectations on everybody's behalf of all of what's going to happen, obviously, when you're on unpaid leave of absence, the holidays, you're not paid for holidays, your paid time off doesn't accrue, so you don't accrue sick time, you don't accrue vacation times, and typically vacation time is, you know, when you work your first year, you already got vacation, so you're awarded your benefited vacation time the following year. So someone was doing, for instance, three weeks of vacation, but they took one-third of the year off on pay, the following year, they would get two weeks of vacation, and then they would go back to the cycle after that.
So it's just off the time?
Yes.
So what about the FMLA?
We don't do, we, we don't have 15 employees, so the FMLA, even if they did, the FMLA, I think, afforded you the time off, but it's not, it's not paid time off, it's, you have to use your.
Sick time.
Your sick time vacation. I think you can, if you use vacation and personal days, you can, in certain circumstances, I don't have it memorized, but certain circumstances, you can bank your sick time for later, but I know you have to use the rest of the, like, vacation and comp time or personal time or whatever other paid time off there might be, so. But that was, you know, in addressing other things, like the New York State Retirement System, if you're time, if you're not paid for time, it doesn't, you don't accrue time in the retirement system, so there have to be some sort of, I'm sure.
Just an understanding that I won't be reporting for that time period, which it wouldn't come through on a report anyway, as he's not being paid, but just kind of an understanding of that.
Yeah, just make sure that everybody has the same expectations and understandings. You know, that's, I guess the first step is, is the board, maybe they're more authorized in unpaid leave of absence, so then it would be documenting these, but I think it'd be prudent to get these out sooner than later. But, you know, make sure they get the expectations out, make the employee understand, we each have to sign copies, I guess, that there's what, there's the conditions, I guess, that.
Especially the medical, we're concerned, because we still have to pay for that, so the employee is, would have to cover in full the amount, they would have to reimburse the village in addition to any Aflac that they have, which Jake and I discussed it, and we thought it would be easier to have them do direct pay with Aflac, we can't do that with Exelis, but.
I don't know if they cover the entire cost of the health insurance, because I thought with the health insurance, it's, I don't know if that's paid yearly or how, but I know at least they're portion of it, typically their 10% of it is a payroll deduction.
Yes, I'm sorry, I missed one.
You can't deduct it, and I don't, you know, typically advanced people, honestly, we have to have some arrangements for it.
Or sending on bill.
And here's the bill, because we know, November 1st, we're going to get a bill for Exelis, so, you know, vice versa, time, you're going to have your time presented to us, and apply that for a bill. I think, like you said, with Aflac, I think some things here, it's all ready, I'll, you know, there's a floating allowance, it's usually ready for it is, but same thing with floating allowance. Whenever the year off, you would assume that's reduced by third, you're putting, you know, 33% less where it currently closes. It's not your bill.
The union contract simply provides that a leave of absence may be granted to full-time employees, leave may be granted to discretion of the village board for a period not to exceed six months without pay or benefits. So, you know, without benefits, you know, the health insurance, I don't know if you drop him, if the village saves any money.
I don't know, you can do that, that's what concerns me, I don't.
What do you mean if you can, if the village can?
I'm just pretty sure the regulations, you can't drop someone for medical insurance.
If they're not working for you, unpaid.
I'm sorry, COVID would come into effect, you know, if you're still an employee, that's why I would call HR works.
We may need some of that information, you ask us to make a decision.
Yeah, we need, we need more.
Well, I think HR works.
First item of the meeting, is the most convenient session. First item.
I'll be more interested if I get HR works.
Yeah, I'd be more comfortable.
I would, yeah, yeah.
Well, if we weren't, we weren't, yeah, you just wanted to get like.
Probably, it just says.
Sorry.
You just want to be in our face, you know, about, you got the information, okay.
Oh, it does say discussion, is that true?
It does, yes.
Um, due tomorrow. Okay, so we will look forward more.
Okay, thank you.
Gen 95, resolutions to authorize 34 to declare 13, 36-inch dial probe monitors as surplus equipment, authorization to sell them to the town of Ontario for $390. I have a motion to do that.
I'll make that motion. I'll second it.
Trustee, Trustee Valcain?
Aye.
Trustee Abalito?
Aye.
Oh, sorry.
Oh.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Trustee Lancy?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Before we move on, I have an item that I would like to discuss briefly here, I don't know six. And that is that the board did not receive the agenda nor the summary of the meeting that was held on Tuesday. It was agreed upon at the last meeting that we would get them prior to the meeting. Also, I don't know if there was a call to Art, that is in the minutes of the last meeting, and if he would be added to the committee, so I don't know if there was a call for him to do that.
I do not know either, and I saw that they went out, so I'm going to have to check with Marcia, because I thought, Jake, I don't, I don't know, I thought copies did always went out, so I don't know.
Copies of the jackets are, maybe, I don't know, before there was a, someone.
I mean, it was just a mission statement and stuff, we really didn't have, but it.
It was all, now the facilitator has been named by the committee, is the chair, facilitator is the chair, and then he had one question about, and I know I would raise a seat on that, about who would be taking the minutes of the meeting, and then I think Marcia said she, and Stella said she would be taking the minutes, so.
Well, no, if it's just a discussion, but we did agree that we get an agenda, and if you guys gave any materials out or shared any information, we were to agree that we would see that before we sent it out, so if you didn't hand any information out, then there's no issue.
I guess, I didn't hand, I did, I prepared a PowerPoint that was dazzling, I might add.
Well, I didn't know you did, it was a PowerPoint, but I would like to.
No, I did my second one out.
I would like to see that.
I guess the mechanism for, if, if, I could send it out, I don't know, there couldn't be an official board unless there's a special meeting called to approve a handout, I guess.
I think it's up to the board to, they don't look at.
Yeah, notification, I guess, to have an authorization, I guess, is different than if it's just a notification, hey, here's materials that went out, and I can certainly send out an email, and then ahead of time, I'm working on another one, because there were certain questions that were brought up and notifications sought, so before the next meeting, I think it's on the 9th.
9th, yeah.
I can certainly, I'll, I'll send that out and say, hey, here's what we're, you know, here's what I'm planning on doing in response to some of the questions or issues that were.
Right, so look, if you created a spreadsheet and shared that, this board should have seen that first, that's all.
Yeah.
You know what I'm saying, because we have no idea what's in the spreadsheet.
I didn't do any other, well, I shared any other spreadsheet with you, but I didn't do any other spreadsheets, it was just a PowerPoint.
It was on there, we had.
Yeah, it had things, and a.
We didn't have to change it.
So if you prepare a PowerPoint, you can put it into print, and something like that, or into an email, and something like that.
Yeah, I can put it attached to an email, because it does animation.
Well, that's what we have.
It's a hundred, no.
I thought it went, I thought it went really well, they asked good questions, but you guys are going to be really happy, they didn't really necessarily agree with me a lot, but.
No, but that's what we wanted, we wanted to hear that, and we got really good questions. I mean, it was, yeah, was quite lively.
Yep, no, I think.
Is everybody there?
Except for Greg and Bill couldn't make it, Greg Chambers was out of town, and I knew he was going to be out of town, because September, he had a lot of issues, but because of the timeframe that you guys wanted it, we had to get it started. So I said, well, I mean, he even called me that night and said, hey, kid, you know, how, how did it go, what, you know, so he is quite interested, and he really does, yeah, he's a good, but everybody else was, they said, oh, Bill didn't make it, either Bill stayed up, he said he couldn't make it.
But I think you said he's planning on the next.
Absolutely, yeah, yeah.
And a few of them that were a little bit behind, that don't learn on their computers all day, that, I think, the retired guys.
And Jim Guck said, oh, my son didn't tell me. I said, okay, I will call you before the night, okay, Jake? But it was, it was quite lively, and they had some interesting questions, a couple of things I don't even think we had thought about at all.
Yeah, I think Perry's doing a great job.
He is, yeah, absolutely super.
I can see a lot of arguments with him. You said, was that Art there, or?
Uh, Art.
Well, he wasn't there. Art wasn't there, no, I don't know if he would have said it to the.
I thought you were gonna, I don't even have flash screen.
She's a bad.
Did, did.
Just reading, I was lost, I was lost.
I'm sorry, Jake.
I didn't think you could pick me up, but.
Knocking a break on the wall.
I will, I will make sure. I will make certain to.
No, yeah, yeah.
I then make do.
Yeah, I don't have his last name, and I didn't know what, what Marsha had, so.
Okay. Um, Will? If you'd like to address that, code enforcement.
Sure. So, uh, it was a slow month because I've been busy with other things, but just to highlight some of the things. Code enforcement wise, two thirty-five Curtis Park, that was the house we had to condemn. I finally got notification from a property maintenance company, Safeguard, saying that they are, they gave notice to the owner, and if the owner doesn't respond by September thirtieth, they are going to remediate the violations. I told them to wear Tyvek and a respirator, and they said, you understand the biohazards that are contained in the house, so I'm happy about that. At least something is moving forward with that house. Breitling Woods is moving quickly, they've been doing a lot of framing, so that's going up, and I'm happy about that. They've got like four crews going at once, so they're really going all gangbusters, so I fully anticipate this being done in like a year and a half. If they keep moving at the pace that they're going. Jojo's, they're up and running.
Yep.
Disappointed we didn't get a soft opening invite, but, um.
So when did they open, what was the date that they opened?
Oh, so they, they had their own friends and family kind of thing on Saturday.
One thing that they brought in was.
Yeah. What define the big scissors are?
We, we should be invited to this, though.
Yeah. But I did, what I did say was, I, I had a long talk with Charlie, and on behalf of the board and behalf of the village, I think, and for all that he's done for the village. I said, I know you've invested your own money and your own sweat, your own time and everything. I said, but everything you do in that capacity really helps the village and makes the village look good, and he appreciated that, so.
Yeah, I was, yeah, I was gonna try and see if I could get Missy to put something in for that whole, that, of the whole area.
Yeah.
You know, take some pictures, I even stopped to see John at the music store.
Yes.
Because just an absolutely excellent job, and he said, hey, I've been here thirty years, nobody cares. And I went, that's not true.
No, no, no.
So that was another, I wanted to get, see if, we don't have Carol anymore, I can miss her to pieces for this stuff. But Missy said that she would, like the, the white things and everything, she wants to do that, I want her to take a look too at, um, Gail's mess things. She's got a beautiful little garden area back there.
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah.
So that's, yeah.
I've known John for thirty-six years, and I was gonna be a rock and roll guitar god, and at seventeen, I bought my first guitar. And he was giving lessons at that time, actually, so, and so we've been friends ever since, and, yeah, he's done a nice job on his facade as well.
Yeah, he's a good guy.
But, you know, it's, it's interesting, so from my perspective, I'm going in and out, in and out, doing inspections, and a wa, uh, last week, I had an opportunity just to walk and pay attention.
What I, yeah.
My goodness, it, it's beautiful.
Well, look at what the quilt shop did on the inside of that, it's just absolutely beautiful.
That helps me segue into the next, yeah, the quilt shops up and running, and they did a really nice job, so all the best to them. CNA Village Townhomes, I just did a framing inspection, so Mr. Vico was actually moving along on that. At the zoning board, well, planning and zoning, so Seventy Barrett Drive, Webster Columbus Center, Knights Columbus. They requested a parking lot expansion, which is interesting, 'cause when I went and did the research for the property, they originally requested that at the original application. It was denied, they wanted more green space, but in this particular case, because there's a little bit of a neighbor dispute, you know, 'cause there used to be an agreement. Now the neighbor doesn't wanna play nice, so, for whatever reason, but they were approved for that, so it'll be nice for them, so. You, Greg, and Vico, they will never help, you know.
Well, no, even because I have the Webster High School alumni, I go there, and we go through this all the time, asking people, you know, to ride together, and, you know. So, yeah, this would be good.
So hopefully that'll solve all the parking issues.
Yeah.
Then, we did have a discussion with the zoning board, 'cause this comes up almost every, every month. We, we've been getting a lot of applications for larger sheds, and so zoning board is looking at proposed changes to the village code regarding shed sizes so that they can give it to the village board to review it. One of the things that came up, which actually sounds pretty good, is.
Sheet heads?
No. Your turn's not up yet. Is like a one percent rule, so depending on the size of the lot, would be one percent of the lot, which if you do the math, it actually makes sense. And which, the minimum being one hundred square feet, and say a maximum would be so much, and anything in between would be one percent of the lot. So you just basically move the decimal place over once, and it makes the law easier, so, or twice. So, uh, that, that's basically it, so.
What's happening with the siding near, with Main Street, the north side of Main Street, right next to.
The old bakery, right?
The old bakery.
So.
If somebody's just interested in.
No, so that's all by Charlie as well. That's, that's next on his, his list to do things on. So as part of the grant, they've got a, as part of the grant, they've got to show progress, so they started removing some of the siding, 'cause the, um, the personnel or whoever it is that's administering the grant was walking with them, and so they wanted to make sure to let them know that they're making progress on all the buildings. So that's, that's what the whole siding thing is about, so.
Will? Thank you. Yeah, does Kerry have anything for us to see? The only thing, and I brought this up with Jake when he, Will and I met with some Verizon representatives. We, we never, as part of the wireless communication local law that was recently adopted. We did not amend the fee schedule to provide for the permit fees, and Verizon has had to try to come in and make some applications, and if there isn't a fee for it, you're not gonna be able to charge them. So I suggest that we just do the presumptively valid, valid fees that the FCC says, which is five hundred dollars for a single application that includes up to five locations, plus a hundred dollars for each additional location beyond five, or a thousand dollars for a new pole, and then two hundred and seventy dollars would be per small wireless facility per year, which would be the right-of-way fee, if they're in the right-of-way. Jake wanted to go and actually see how the two hundred and seventy dollars related to their actual cost. I say, just do the two hundred and seventy dollars, and we'll figure that out later, because you can, if we don't get something on the books soon, you, you could end up missing a lot of fees that Verizon is gonna argue, we're not gonna pay, 'cause there's no record that calls for it. No, no, we, we put it, it was gonna be, always gonna be in the fee schedule, that way, if you change it, you don't have to go through the whole local law process to amend the local law, you just, you improve the fee schedule every year as part of the organization, so it's much easier to throw it in there to make changes to it than put it actual, actually in the local law, so.
Makes sense.
The local law just, the local law references that the village has charged the fee, or a fee, but it doesn't say what it is, you gotta look at the fee schedule to figure it out. So if we could get there, the next, the next meeting agenda, that would be nice.
We can't just do it now?
To amend it to include what you just said.
You could do it now, I suppose.
Tom, you came up with a really good idea.
Would it make a difference?
Here, here's the.
I wrote it down.
Jude will make the motion, so it's to amend the fee schedule.
Okay, to amend the fee schedule that was adopted in September twenty-sixth, two thousand and eighteen. Set forth certain presumptive valid fee levels for small cell permit applications. These are, one, five hundred dollars for a single application that may include up to five locations, plus a hundred dollars each additional location beyond five, or a thousand dollars for a new pole, and two, two hundred and seventy dollars per small wireless facility per year for use of the public. I will W.
Right away.
Okay, what was your name?
Well said.
Can I have a standing?
I'll second it.
Trustee Lancy?
Aye.
Trustee Alito?
Aye.
Trustee Valcain?
Aye.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Poll wouldn't be very optimal, probably, right? Well, no, but what the law tries to do is have them locate on existing grounds, so, and, you know, it's cheaper for them to do it that way. Their own poll is sort of a last resort. Thank you. DPW.
The, for the DPW, I just wanna point out a couple things, bike racks, two of the four are, have been installed, you know, on Main Street, there are one on the south side of West Main Street, one on the north side of West Main Street. We called a little bit of an audible on the, one on the north side, there was a discussion, I'll talk to him, but, there was a discussion in the survey about putting that village hall, but we worked on the assumption that most people aren't gonna ride their bikes to pay their tax bill, get their passports, so with the game shop and the pizza shop and the coffee shop right across the street, we thought that'd probably be a better spot, we found an area where we had blith in our right-of-way, so we put it right behind, basically right across from the village hall there. We're in the game shop, so it's a pretty good central location, we moved one of the ones that said Village Webster. There's, if you remember, there's two hoop ones that say Village Webster, and two icon hitch ones, they call it, just post kind of a loop on them, that just said the bike symbol. Village Webster one, we didn't wanna put perpendicular to a street, 'cause it would look good from one area, one direction, and really, really goofy from others. This works out good, the way they're in their position as well. The, with, we had a discussion earlier about a leave of absence, I know that's tabled, but we'd still like authorization if we could for a seasonal worker. You know, I mean, we had, we had a couple of applications, and we had a discussion with one of the people, I know Lancy checked up on one of his previous employers, and called those in his references, talked to the gentleman today, he's been out of town, so we haven't had, come in for an interview yet. We'd like, we'd like to, heading to possible interview, authorization to hire a seasonal employee at the rate of eleven, ten per hour, starting as early as thirtieth of September, to be next. Put that out, I guess. And a last thing before we, that is, forty-nine, had discussions with the, and Will, I think, was there as well, but discussions with property owner in forty-nine South Ave, which is the house beginning south of the firehouse, or it's a, it's an apartment house, it is, it's really now, and I talked to Don about it, he's made, has a request. It appears that there was an old entrance, there's curb missing, and there's an old entrance to the back parking lot. There's a couple fence posts there, I don't want to have a chain, but there's a curb missing. He gets occasional deliveries, and it's difficult, you know, depending on the time of the year when they're there too, is getting the delivery spun around and get back out on the South Avenue. It'd be more advantageous to be able to just pull out the bag. His intention would be to leave the block up most of the time, but have the ability to pull a vehicle straight through there. Also, what he wants to do is clean up along that, there's a burn between the parking lot, there's a lot of underbrush and grills there, and some old trees. He wants to talk about taking a couple of the trees out as well, but, rather than, rather than, he pointed to the neighbor across the parking lot. But, you know, that was a nice way to do it, it looked nice. Our parking lot extends, our property appears, you know, just looking at parcel viewer, which can be skewed down there, it appears to extend into part of that burn. And he has a willingness to take, take on whatever he wants to do there with the landscaping, 'cause effectively, it's gonna reflect on him, you know, things, 'cause it's, it looks like it's part of his property. And he knows no matter where the line is. So we were talking about doing an easement, I talked to Don about it, an easement for ingress, e, ingress and egress over his parcel through a, um, an entrance that he would make and be responsible for doing there and maintaining all the apron and all that work, and he would do whatever landscaping wanted in there. But because the way the parcel is, and Will or Don can correct me if I'm wrong, I think what it went from, it was a hair salon, and went to where it was present use and disadministrated, changed abuse. Not sure how the planning board, what their stipulations say down there, and their current, you know, I mean, initial approval. So Don suggested they go back to planning and potentially zoning, I don't know if that would be a zoning thing or just planning. Before I say, hey, be in that occasionally, go to zoning, or go to planning, or planning and zoning, whatever it is, and he has the fees incurred with that. I guess, I'd like to kind of take the temperature of the board to see if the board says absolutely not. I don't think I'd wanna have them spend the money and go to planning and zoning for something that's not gonna work. Obviously, you don't have all the details now, but in general, just, you know, questions about that kind, you know, it's, like I said, it's the first property just south of the firehouse, there's a little retaining wall there, and on the east, uh, excuse me, the west end of that, you'll see there's a couple of spots. And it would require shifting and probably losing one parking spot right there, because it wouldn't make sense to maintain that parking spot, and then you wouldn't have access, you know. Unless somebody, you know, and I think that wouldn't be, you know, done when we reseal or when we do some maintenance on that, it just wouldn't paint the one line back. And hopefully, most people would park in front of the driveway, but, um, never.
So that's just to the north of the Baptist Church?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, just.
Yeah. So is that, I mean, there's nothing to bone on now, I guess, but I just wanted to put it out there that that's something that comes up, and if there's no ways, because no one's staying in the way ever. And let's go, but obviously, anything that gets approved by planning ultimately, we're agreeing by on, this board, want to end the easement with them for the rest of the stuff, for that.
What, what's the business that's there, like what does he do?
Like, there's apartments upstairs, he does, I believe it's sound, um, sound and, yeah, I have his card. Do you know what he does?
He basically goes to conferences or, you know, educational conferences, any kind of conference I get where they require it to be recorded, audited, whatever it may be. And he provides all of the accompanying requirements for all that, so, camera, sound.
So these deliveries, it's not like it's gonna be tractor trailers pulling.
No, it's typically obstrux, you know, like that he said, where you get, you know, some of this equipment, you know, recording, putting their speakers in, or, I, I, you know, the sound equipment, I guess.
So there won't be a lot of wear and tear on the parking lot?
No.
Right?
Called the barter system, we need new sound equipment.
I'm just pointing out an obvious fact.
Jake, did you also wanna go on that, please?
Yeah, I was gonna, just to grab, get everything out and talk about it, so.
So, so, but that, so, but that, forty-nine South Ave, you're looking for an entrance in and out, or looking for an entrance to go in and then into the parking area.
lot.
Yeah, he has a single curb cut right now, if you will, on South Avenue, where you can enter, it's a pretty big area behind there, only about half of it's paved, and I don't think he's looking to pave any more of that, because he uses it for snow storage and, you know, when he clears his parking lot, he's, he's looking to plant some more harbor righties and improve the back of that a little bit, but he's looking for Ingress and Egress season, so if he can just pull out into the back, you know, into the back parking lot there, and they said there's curb missing, where he's looking at doing this, and I'd like to have them assume that, so I try to look at historic aerials to see if I can see anything, because they're so fuzzy, but, and there are newer fence posts that are there, that, you know, they used to have a chain there, but it does appear that there was at some point, something, but I'm not, I couldn't confirm that one way or another.
Anything else?
No, I just, I don't know if the board wants to take any action on the seasonal.
How long? December thirty-first, kind of, pretty?
Um, I guess, yeah, time to delay, that would line up with what the request is for the unpaid people's absence. And we typically have somebody in the wintertime, throughout the lead season, and then in the wintertime, to shove it in a box, and things like that, especially for downwind. I don't know if the poll.
Just keep in mind, Judy will have to come to the sexual harassment training.
Yes.
And we have a cuddle at eleven a.m. on Monday.
Yeah, unless he's taken it somewhere else already.
Yes, that's true.
Oh, yeah, because that's the last day, isn't it?
Fifteenth, but I have one scheduled with Lynn Barton on Monday.
Is that something we can videotape and then just like save it and show it to?
I really don't want to be videotaped.
No?
You can.
Well, yeah, it's on the Department of Labor website.
But that won't make it interactive, though, so, no.
No, it's got. No, you can't do that. You can't just videotape an existing one and show it the next year. It has to have an interactive component to it.
Right, you have a test, and you have a.
No, it doesn't count. We just paid someone to do it for us, and they told me.
I know, and I agree, and we didn't have to, because the Department of Labor website said you could just do that, have a little test, and you have to be interactive.
They told me that wouldn't be, that it shouldn't work.
Did they just update it, though? Like, it's all, these are new policies?
I think we could entertain a motion to layer seasonal health at eleven dollars per hour, beginning October first.
I hit September thirtieth, just because.
No, beginning October first?
Well, that's why I had beginning September thirtieth, it's just, and Monday, or Tuesday, I had.
September thirtieth through December thirty-first. And the name is to be announced.
I'll make that motion, I'll make that, if you say. Okay, I'll make that motion.
One second.
Trustee Lancy?
Hi.
Trustee Valcain?
Aye.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Anything to answer?
No, I agree.
If you want to report.
About this, um.
Okay. Any other business for the board? All right, then our next meeting will be a workshop, October first, at six thirty P.M. And note that change, the time will be six thirty P.M., not seven o'clock, October first, two thousand and nineteen, followed by a village board meeting on October tenth, and the second one in the month, October twenty-fourth, two thousand and nineteen. There's no other business, and I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, no. Motion there.